Wait a minute, we'll both open the hearing. Me, someone? Second?
Seconded. Seated tonight. Looks like you. Who's seated? I just want to know, I mean, am I voting tonight or am I not? Do we have a?
I'll get to that one, let's just open it. You can vote tonight on the cell tower.
That's why I didn't want to open.
You can vote tonight on the cell tower unless it's something you have to recuse yourself on later. Okay, first applicant?
Actually, he can vote in a minute.
Do you want to do the minutes?
I looked at them online. Do you have your problems?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 9th as written.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to open the hearing, but. Cell tower.
If we're going to move right into the cell tower before we open that hearing, I'm going to excuse myself.
You want to vote it?
I'm a conflict of interest and Tamara's going to sit as a, as the selectmen's representative for this issue tonight and as long as the issue goes on. And I'll leave all this stuff here for you and there we go.
I'm just going to read who's here, who is doing, if that's okay with you.
Sorry, can I ask, did OJ just recuse himself and Tammy joined the board and said?
That's correct.
Okay, and what was the issue that he refused for?
I'm recusing myself because the, a different company, but still representing the first net cell tower program, has a signed contract to put a cell tower up at the whale sale, which would, this applicant came in first, but we have a signed agreement for that, so that's, it'd be a conflict of interest to me to sit on this one.
Oh, good. Okay, well, great. Thank you for explaining that. Sorry I missed it, I was out there getting a vest.
Excuse me? Of the applicants, I mean, not the applicants, but members seated. Paul, Tammy in place of OJ. Steve, and I can't see who's on.
And Mark.
Mark Herman.
Hi, Joe.
We've four and Paul, will be seated for this one if you have no conflicts. I'll give us a form.
Great. And then I wondered if you wanted me to read the list of the people who are present because some of them are on Zoom.
Please, please do.
Okay. Was in the audience, now she's sitting for this hearing. Attorney John Springer is here.
Hello?
Pardon?
I said hello.
Hi. Town manager, Bird Bank is here on the Zoom. The town attorney, Peter Malia, is here on the Zoom. Doug Grant is here, I'm not sure you're, you're on the board of selectmen from somewhere. Hello?
Doug, I'm the chair of the board of the North Country Council.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Chair of the Board of what?
North Country Council.
North Country Council, the regional planning commission for Coas County, Northern Grafton County, and Northern Carroll County.
Okay, thank you.
And Ivan Pagachik is the town's expert on telecommunications towers. Caleb Taveras is here from North Country Council. Cheryl Riordan is here from White Mountain Attractions. Peter Spanos is here from the Indian Head. Kim Pickering is here from the Chamber of Commerce. Ray Corber is here, he is the town engineer. Mark Erman is on the board, but he's appearing via Zoom. Kevin Mason, not sure who you are, maybe you could let us know.
Hi, I'm a consultant for AT&amp;T and just monitoring the Green Mountain application with Attorney Springer.
Okay. Okay, Carl Martland, who is, why don't you tell us what your title is, Carl? I can't remember the whole thing.
Chair of the North Country Scenic Byway Council, and I'm here with my wife Nancy Martland.
Okay, Peter Cook is here in the audience. You can tell us who you are.
I'm with the applicant GMR Holdings, New Hampshire, Wisconsin.
Okay, and OJ Robinson was initially sitting, he's the selectmen's representative on the planning board, but he stepped down and he's in the audience. Albon is sitting and is here in person, Steve Melsworthy is here in person. Is there anybody else? Oh, and Ron Beard is our everything person, he's the fire chief, the health officer, the code enforcement guy, the videotape recording person.
IT.
The IT guy and anything else that we can think of.
But you have someone that phoned in also.
Okay, and I have somebody else who phoned in that I'm missing.
348-8733.
Could you let us know who you are?
Ask one units.
Yeah, they won't see that on the phone.
Okay, well, just tell me the number and I'll write it down. 603?
Yep.
Okay. And then I'm Carol Bond, I'm the planner, and I think that's it.
We're having a hearing tonight for GMR Holdings, site plan review for proposed 120-foot-high telecommunications cell tower under land use plans, so, plan orders, Article 6-A. Telecommunications equipment and facilities have been filed by the agent, John, John Springer, who's also an attorney, for the applicant of GMR Holdings of Pembroke, Mass, New Hampshire, sorry about that. And the property of Donald Landry, TBA Greenside Link, Inc. The property is on US Route 3, 749, Lincoln, New Hampshire, located in general use. The proposed project includes construction of 120-foot-tall monopole tower within a 40 by 40 times 38 times 52-inch four-foot fence. Compound will be, will be within a parking lot of the landscaping business adjacent to the building located at 749 US Route 3, tax map 126, lot 1020.
Oh, I think that's wrong, I'm sorry. It should be map 102 lot 5.
So noted.
I had it corrected up above, but not here.
The property is approximately 1.06 acres in size, is triangle-shaped between I, between US 90, US, I mean, I, next, on Route 93, exit 34A ramp on the interstate on northbound and US Route 3. The property is owned by Greenside Inc., LLC. Current use by the property is a landscaping business. In addition to site planner, and in addition, site planner rule approval, the applicant's condition is permit persuas- persuasion to Article 4, Section A, Article 4-A, Section 4. F, for, to increase the lot height from 120 to 120 feet. The applicant is also seeking waivers from Article 6-4, Section H. What's the 4A I? Carol?
You want me to read that?
Go ahead, what's the 4A for?
Well, it's Section 4, paragraph, so paragraph 4, then A, then I. You know, they're just a different section, it just.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
In an outline form.
Which state the tower should be located within the tower lot as provided a fall zone free of any structures equal to 125% of the height of the tower. Second part of it is, second, site plan review regulation, 6, 23D, which requires engineering calculations used to determine the drainage requirements. Third part, Article 6-A, Section J. As a condition of acceptance only, the planing void shall require the applicant to post adequate certainty for the cost maintenance, repair, and removal thereof. The amount involved, informed of the certainty shall be determined by the planing void.
Okay, so that's, that's it. The rest of it is just information for us, people who want to participate, so.
Okay, we'll open the hearing to, for the applicant.
Joe?
That's Peter Malia.
Go ahead.
Before you open the hearing to the applicant, I think, I would suggest that you go through the site plan checklist and determine whether or not the application is complete. I think that's probably your first order for business tonight. This came in with the application. So.
Okay, the application.
You should probably do that first.
It's in your binder.
That's in your binder. That's the very first thing on top, right after that. First page, when you turn. Two pages past that is the site plan review checklist.
Miss Phil, everybody have it?
Yeah.
Let me, we didn't get any, had some big problems today, yes, and Phil was not less than one inch and 40. We have these plans. Well, she's getting the plans, you want to go along with the other questions?
The plans are in your notebook, that's, they give us three big sets, so you're going to have to associate this time and look at the plans.
First question, the plan. Listen, 130, 140, they have listed 130, that's divided. We have three sets of the plans. The date, title, and what the cell scale, address of the owner and applicant. Name and address of land surveyor, and that could plant site showing existing natural features. Needs to be there. Location, existing proposed landscaping and open space, indicating landscape and open space area will be retained. That fine? No, I just wonder where the rock, wall, where the walls come in here, so let's see this, the walls retaining what came here. Put in 1974.
Information that's very close.
The wall was put in 1974.
Well.
That's the first one, cloud 93.
Number five.
Find it?
Yeah, I guess I'm also.
Okay, referring to page Z5 of the plans, right?
Yeah.
Topography is at 240, so. For mapping. But plain indications. We've got a day of towns of big. Location of all buildings set back. Listened. Where we can type of access. Location of existing proposed D restrictions, not applicable. So we have property lines, reflection angles, so forth, they're all on the map right here. Where is that subdivision that's not applicable?
Can you go, just keep following numbers.
Number 19.
Do you mind saying what number you're on?
Okay. Number 19, not applicable.
On the 19.
Plans of building on site. Listed. Elevation. Is in there. Type and so, waste disposal, not required. Okay, site design for both sides.
Okay, that's on a separate piece of paper that you got. This time.
Are you looking at number 23? Because that's exhibit 8, I believe. I'm sorry, exhibit 7 is the proposed sign?
Yeah, 7, that's right. See in your notebook, there's a 7.
Yeah.
And that's the sign right there.
That's the sign.
Yeah.
I had 7 in my notebook. Can we find that one? 23. Going up to 20, 24. Listing proposed methods of more stairs, don't want to run off.
Maybe you can help us with this, John, what page is that?
I would, sheet Z, as in zebra, 6.
6, okay, yeah.
I mean, honestly, there's not a lot, we're putting in a swale, so there's not a huge amount, but it's, yeah, the information's there.
We also have a big sheet, I don't want to say what we went along.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that comment, if that was directed at me.
Big sheet basically also.
Yeah, how many square feet is that going to disturb?
I give that figure, hold on, it's about 2900 square feet, or hold on.
Oh, wait, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, it's, uh, the area of disturbance is 2,898 square feet, plus or minus, which represents 6.36% of the lot area. And that information's in page 10 of the narrative we submitted, but that, so that's where I'm getting the numbers. Do you, do you want me to repeat that?
Yeah, because you were kind of in and out.
Yeah, that's okay, I know, I'm happy to do it. The area of disturbance is 2,898 square feet. Plus or minus, which represents 6.36% of the lot.
Okay, and is that the disturbance for the entire project, meaning, or is that the amount of land that's going to be that's disturbed that when the project is all done?
That.
Can you articulate that part a little bit?
No, I think I understand what you're saying, I, I think that represents the area of disturbance all total.
Okay. Okay. And where, where do we find that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that either. The narrative?
It's in the narrative on page 10.
Is that on a plan at all? Or is that what this plan is on Z6?
Last paragraph, page 10. Just on where? In the narrative after your site plan review checklist, or page, and then, the last paragraph is the certain area. So after the checklist.
Actually, and.
First actually.
If I may, and I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I know. And it is, it's on sheet Z3 in one of the boxes. Left on sheet Z3. John, just FYI, whenever you turn away from your computer and look at your documents, we can't hear you. Sorry, I know, it's, I'm trying to do that, I'll try to be better.
According to this, less than 50% disturbance.
Less than 50, less than 50,000 per feet, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying. You got it, Carol?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, John.
Elevation, building to height, that's on the map also. Type of location, is we saw where it's supposed to, not applicable. Location side, design, proposed structures, assigned, and never advertising, now, also on there. Said it was one sign, wasn't it?
Which number are you on, Joe? I lost track, what's the number you're on?
I'm going on 24, 25, 24. 23 was the signs.
Right, I thought we just did 24 too, but.
We just did 24.
We're on 24, Joe.
I know. So we went back to the other one, so this, we could show it on the list. Directional runoff to the arrows, that's on the, all 24 has been gone through, except the engineering calculation to determine drainage requirements. And you get a way, ask for waiver of that.
Joe, you should probably ask for a motion to approve that waiver, and then when it's seconded, you can discuss it and then vote on it.
We want to approve, when we approve the waiver?
I'd like this one discussion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to know what our town engineer thinks about this waiver.
Paul, do you want to move the, move to approve the waiver, get it seconded, then it's on the floor for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver. So I made the motion.
I'll second it. We have discussion now? I'd like to know, hey, Ray, are you there? Ray Corber?
Yep, I'm here, Paul.
Okay. We're, he said they're asking for a waiver from engineering calculation due to determine drainage requirements. Have you reviewed the plan and are you okay with this? And it sounds bad?
Uh, no, we haven't reviewed the plan, so, uh, can't address that.
You have not reviewed the plan?
I have not reviewed the plan.
And I would not make a recommendation. Tell our engineer to take a look at it.
Make a notation of it.
I make a motion that we denied the waiver request, so, since time as a town engineer, refuse it.
We already have a motion seconded, boy.
A motion, press right.
So I will withdraw my motion.
And I'll withdraw my second, and I'll make a new motion that we deny the waiver, tell the town, town engineers have a chance to review the plans.
24D, correct?
On, on 24D, yes.
You have that, Carol?
And I, could I speak to that?
Who's that?
Peter Malia.
Okay. Go ahead.
Your original motion was okay, because if you wanted to deny it, you had to do is vote no to your motion to approve it. But nevertheless, rather than deny it or approve it, sounds like maybe you want to defer your decision until Ray Corber has had an opportunity to review the plans and provide you with his opinion on the request for the waiver. So instead of denying it, do you want to defer a decision on this waiver request until your November meeting? Because after this, well, I think after this, we're probably going to schedule a balloon test and come back in November, so do you want to just defer a decision on this particular waiver request until your November meeting?
So, so, we have three options, either approve, deny, or postpone, or defer, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
As far as any of these, I am go.
Yeah, there's one other waiver, there's one other waiver request coming up.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just, I didn't know that that was an option, so. I guess I'll withdraw my motion again. And I'll make a new motion to defer this.
Please, please, a second.
Until we have, we should say what people said first, to defer this waiver request until our November meeting. And that we would like to have our town engineer review prior to that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Martin, they got us, Mark, Joe.
I can't hear Mark.
Mark, did you want to vote on that?
No, I don't, I mean, you've all voted in favor, so my votes are relevant, and I don't really have an opinion.
You're seated now.
You're seated.
You can still vote, you're seated.
I abstain.
I'm abstaining.
Before you move on to number 25, John, maybe I could ask you a question, if, if Ray Corber, between now and the November meeting, determined that he'd like to see those drainage requirements, and if we let you know during the intervening period between now and the next meeting, I assume you'd like to have that information so that you can get your engineers to put that information together for the town?
I would agree with that.
So Ray, as soon as you've had an opportunity to review the plans and determine whether or not you want to see, or you think it's necessary to see, engineering calculations used to determine the drainage requirements, you can let Carol know, and she will pass that, pass your opinion along to John.
Everybody in favor on the board? You said, add to it?
I think so, we already made a motion for it, so.
That works, that works.
Okay, number 25. Enough of using the water and soil, I don't believe. So that's not applicable. Number 26, site location. Proposed public and private utility connections provided, and provisioned for vital protection, I believe that's on the map.
Can I ask where that is?
Now, where is that?
Do you have it down there? Number 27?
Wait, wait, did, um, did he say where that was?
I'm looking, but I can't look and respond at the same time, so.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, I would say, look at sheet Z4. It has the proposed utility rack. It shows the existing overhead utility line.
Okay, let's go on to the next one.
Can I ask another question? Ron, have you looked at this? Because it's talked about. Including provisions for fire protection. If you look at this in regards to. Fact, there's a diesel generator there, or whether there's any other things that the fire department would have any concerns about?
I'm not really seeing it out on that. Good proper distance. Facility for the generator. That is diesel powered versus propane.
I just want to make sure that you've got a chance to review it.
Well, I think at this point, are we just seeing that the elements of the application are in?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm asking, is if, if Ron has everything he needs, really make that decision.
Ready?
Yeah.
Location of all existing lighting, and I'm doing activities and facilities. That's, that leaves a map twenty Z four.
John, is that on Z four also?
Well, honestly, I'm not sure the. Light is called out on the plans, I can look, but. The tower's not going to be lit. The only light is going to be, if there is a light, there's going to be a sixty watt bulb. Over the door to the equipment shelter, if you will, that's turned on when the guy is there. Our itself is not going to be lit, we're not going to have floodlights illuminating the compound or anything like that. I know we discussed, I, I know we discussed that in the narrative. Uh, whether that. Light bulb is called out on the plans, I, I'd have to take a minute or two to look.
So then I have a question as new on, on Z four. Uh, there is a new proposal, new utility pole, does that have a light on it?
Utility pole, no. If that, I don't, I don't believe that will be lit, no.
We're going on to twenty eight. We have all the copies, state. That will state for move approval in the minutes. Carol?
Well, he's got not applicable.
Right, and that doesn't fit the question.
So, are there no state approvals required or anything?
Should we have to, right? With Ray being our engine, engineer, know that?
Would that be something you would know, Ray?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, Paul, what was that?
It says, one of the items says copies of all applicable. Applications submitted for applicable state approvals and permits. Uh, are you aware of, or would you be the one to ask if there are any? State approvals or permits. Necessary for this project?
Uh, uh, yeah, I mean, we could. We, I, we get to it, but. Um, at this point, I'm not, I'm not prepared to state specifically what state approvals might be required. I think there's. There's several, obviously, with respect to the poll itself, but. As far from a, from a site plan standpoint. Given the area of impact, there's probably not going to be, I, I assume there's no welllands impacts or those sorts, sort of things, but we would have to get into the site plan to review that.
So should we? We ask Ray to check into it to make sure that it is. Before we say not applicable, Ray has a chance to look at it.
Also, we were required to have federal approval permits.
Do we need it? I would think we would need a motion to have Ray take a look at it. Do we need to do that?
Because. Have Ray take a look at it on favor.
All right.
I got a question, I'm saying.
I.
Are you okay with that, Peter?
Sure, yeah, I think that's fine to have Ray take a look at number twenty, that was number twenty eight. You might, might want to ask John to speak to it. Too, because I think he does this.
I, I do, yeah, I do a lot, is I'm not aware of any state permits necessary for the monopole. This is it. I, I mean, if there is, I would be very interested to learn what other state purposes are. Required, I, I mean, Mr. Corber can research it, obviously, but honestly, for the completeness hearing tonight. I would, I guess I would do the same thing we did last time, which is, you want to defer this issue to the next. Hearing, fine. But for purposes of completeness. I think we've met this, because I, I'm just not aware of any other state permit. I never go in front of any state board. If, if there's a welllands issue, which there's not on this site. That's a different issue, but. You know, Mr. Corber can research or whoever, but I'm, I, I'm not aware of any other state permit.
Well, I would think it would be, we've already voted, but I would think it would be in his best interest to have Ray look at it. And bounce the second, just to make sure. That he concurs.
It's fine.
And we're not going to require them to have a performance bond at number twenty nine.
If, if I can, if I can speak to that. Your checklist. Talks about the performance guarantee your bond as a condition of acceptance, so we can move forward. But I don't know how anybody can do that on this type of project, because. Uh, we haven't been approved yet. What we're saying is, we're happy to submit a, a removal bond if you want. Uh, but that's. Always done at the end of the process and not as part of the submission.
I have a motion to defer it till the end of the project, next. My question?
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask. Peter about that.
Yeah, and John's, Attorney Springer's project narrative that he wrote. They're not saying they refuse to post a bond, they're saying. It makes no sense to post a bond right now, because the planning board might deny this application, so. If at the end of this, this. Planning board review, they are fortunate enough to receive an approval that will come with some conditions. And one of the conditions will require them to post whatever bonds you want them to post, so. I think it's okay right now to waive it for purposes of. The application being accepted as complete, and then just move on with the review, and if they're later approved, we'll address bonding.
I, I agree a hundred percent with that.
So. So do we need a motion to say that we were granting a waiver, or do we say that we're going to reconsider it? During, after the application has been discussed?
Uh, you could either grant the waiver requested, or you can say, um, make a motion that it's not applicable at this time. And it will be readdressed if, and when the. Um, application is approved.
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion.
To be reassessed after the application is approved, it's not applicable at this time.
Second. On the favor.
Hi. Carol, you have all these?
Well, we have to, I'm trying to write as fast as I can. So between the two, we should be able to.
Illustration effect on pedestrian, motor circulation. Not applicable. The fencing, I believe, listed on the V maps.
Are you on thirty one now?
Thirty one.
The walls. Carol, any questions in there about whether, whether they were four feet? Height and then so. Are they four feet, are these retaining walls higher four feet or higher than four feet?
They are.
They are. So then on the.
That's the engineer.
Building engineer from. The town engineer will either review those, or they'll, they'll engineering stamp.
Yeah, they need to be engineered, and then.
Ray needs to.
Then Ray will review the plans. And they have to be, they have to be reviewed as they're being built, so they're still properly.
Are these rock walls already built, or are they going to be built?
Going to be, they're going to be.
Because there is one set over there already from the third, from that seventh, so I don't want to find out.
Not right there.
It's going to be ready rock wall, so. Right.
Right.
Operations don't even, yeah, review them.
Because that, excuse me, that's the side, done at the time of the, the land use permit? Or is. Is a requirement for site plan review to have?
Well, that's a good question, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I know.
What was the question?
Paying for the permit, you'd have to.
John, they're asking about when we would provide engineering for the retaining walls, and my. Question and request would be that would be part of the land use permit and a condition of our approval. Typically, we wouldn't provide, be similar to a structural design for the pole, we typically provide that at the time of the. Building permit slash land use permit, to inspect the, the, so we certainly acknowledge that. It's just, the affidavits need to be provided, as provided in the bylaw, and they need to be engineered stamped for the wall system. But typically, that would be done after site plan review.
Yes, I think we, we typically do it as part of site plan review. Am I correct? We, we typically discuss the road. Any rock walls or retaining walls during site plan review.
Yeah, for the hotels and stuff.
Hotels for anything. And Ray has a chance to weigh in prior, so that we can.
Yeah, we're a little hypersensitive about the retaining laws, this is the fatality that we had associated with the fail, uh, retaining wall. So. So we have, we have discussed it.
We could certainly.
Can we defer it?
We can defer it until the, the eleven, yeah, for sure. But the eleven meeting on the. Would that be okay?
Meantime, he can give the generic specs to Ray, make him always look at it.
Yeah, I mean, it was my understanding, I, I think that was Peter Cook talking before. And he expressed, or whoever was talking before a few minutes ago, expressed what my understanding is, and that was, I understood. The retaining wall to be engineered. After approval. I mean, we've, and, and if I misunderstood, I'm sorry, we show the retaining walls on our plans. We understand they've got to be discussed as part of this process, there's no question about it, but it's, it's my understanding, the actual engineering took place after. If you're saying that's going to take place during this process. Okay, I, I guess we're going to have to deal with it. We don't, I don't, and Peter can correct me if I'm wrong, based on our understanding, we didn't have, we don't have sitting here today. The engineering done for those walls. But I would ask that it then be handled throughout this process, like, you know, and, and find us complete tonight, so we can move forward.
Well, I.
Do you have any input from Ray?
Yeah, I do. Ray, Ray Corber?
Yes, I'm here.
Um. I'd like to ask you about this engineering. And the timing of when engineering should be done. Um. I mean. We've had. Information down here and there with, with when things are done. Um, sometimes after the fact is not necessarily the best, in my opinion. For best to get it resolved and discussed, so everybody's happy with it, before we give any final resolution, in my. My opinion, but, uh, you're engineering, you're the one that's going to have to review it, so. I know your schedules are always tight.
Uh, well, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, the town's process is that, um, there needs to be a preconstruction control affidavit. Signed by the structural engineer who is responsible in the engineer record for the wall, so. In order for that engineer to do that, the, the walls need to be designed, and that's part of the land use. Uh, permit process, so. You know, it, uh, obviously, they, they're not prepared to, you know, they, they haven't submitted designed walls, you know. At this stage of the process, so I, I, it's, it's part of your site plan review process. So if you need a preconstruction control affidavit, then those. Walls need to be, typically, Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, but typically, that's a requirement before the town is ready to issue a land use permit, yes?
Right, right.
Right, so, so the, the answer then to, to Paul's question is. The walls need to be designed and submitted in a preconstruction control affidavit, uh, sent. Um, from the engineer of record, uh, to the town before a land use permit can be issued.
Could I speak to that?
So that could be a condition of the.
Right. That's what I figured, I thought it would be done as a condition of approval. Because we're, I mean, this is what, and I, I'm just being honest with you, I, I found. It confusing when the materials talk about a land use permit, which I understand ultimately, that's not what we get from the. Planning board, right? We're getting site plan approval, conditional use approval, right?
Yeah.
Right, and so that's why we have not engineered the wall now. I thought if we get site plan approval. One of the conditions was, you have to go get your land use permit. And as part of that process, that's when we actually do the engineering of the wall.
But it's engineered.
I'm sorry?
Part of the process would be, where are you going to put those engineering walls, and what's happened is. Not necessarily with the manufactured walls, but with the. You know, with the, with the boulder retaining walls, is that people are not designing enough space to. Um, actually properly construct the walls, and so it does. Impact on the amount of disturbed area, so they come in. You know, with a, a plan that says, I'm only going to disturb this, you know, the two feet around the area where I'm going to put my wall. And the next thing you know. You know, they've disturbed, you know, disturbed fifteen feet around the side of that wall, so. Um, it would make sense to be, have it be part of the discussion, maybe in the site plan review, but. I guess I would be looking to.
Well, I think it, I think your point's relevant. I mean, we've had a lot of areas of disturbance. That are come as a result of construction. And the wall's definitely one of those. And. That lends itself to having the information prior to the issuance of the land use permit.
Right.
You go back later, as you just said, Carol, and they said, well, you know, the, the wall was only. Two feet wide, but we had to take up fifteen feet on each side of it to put it in. Because we had a backlot there, and we had to grub it all out, then, you know, then the. And granted, the area here is nowhere near the fifteen thousand square feet. Required. Uh, but we still, we still should have those numbers before we make any decision. And, I mean, conversely, if, if you make a decision and then find that this is a problem. You get held up, because there becomes a problem then, and you got to go back. And we've, we've spent a lot of time doing that. With applications.
So I would suggest we defer it for the next meeting with provisions, the Ray overs. Ray or what, if he ever looks over the, the wall, to make sure that.
Are you making that?
Then we can add it to the overall site. Approvals. At the time, whether we have to amend it or not, I mean, put provisions in.
Are you making that motion?
Can I, can I speak to that? Just Peter.
Go ahead.
I don't, I think they need to know if you, the planning board, are going to want to see. Engineered walls before you make your decision. If you want to see that before you make your decision, then there's no sense in deferring this. You should let them know now, so that they can get their engineer started on it. There's no sense in deferring it until November, and then telling them that you want to see engineered plans for your wall.
That was the intent.
To me, it's similar to the bonding. Not, not the same, but similar in that. If they get approved, before they build their cell tower, they're going to have to build the walls, and before they build the walls, their engineered plans are going to have to be approved by Ray Corber. But to have them engineer walls now that might never be built, because they might, might be denied. Uh, to me, seems like it, it might be unnecessary to require them to do that at this stage. I think it could be a condition of approval, um, whereby if they. Uh, are approved. One of the conditions is that they provide performance bonds, another condition is that they provide. Engineering for the retaining walls that. Uh, is, are approved by Ray Corber. But that's just me. If you, as a planning board, want to sort of take control of the engineering of the walls yourselves. Then it's certainly within your purview to require them to submit engineered plans to you now, if you want, if you want to see those plans. But I think you should tell them that tonight, not wait until November, if that's what you want.
Well, I'd rather see him tonight.
I, I don't disagree with that.
I'd rather, I, I'd rather tell them that tonight, because. We have too many instances already where.
Delay, delay, delay.
That, well, it's not delay, things have been said, and, you know, we're going to put up a wall here, or, or we're going to put up a building here, we're only going to disturb this much. And then it comes back, and then there's a ton more to stir, or something's changed about the site. And the more information we have at the beginning. I think the better we can make the decision, and that the easier it is, everyone knows what to expect. So for me, I'd rather see it.
So would I.
May, may I be heard on two points? I, I'm okay with that, so long as. We understand. We understand for purposes of completeness, so we can move forward, what we've submitted is complete. Right?
That's fine.
Okay. That's number one. Number two, honestly, I don't disagree with what the board is saying here. I get what you're saying. But just for applicants going forward. I understand why the planning board says we want to see the engineering, we want this as part of site plan approval, because. You're saying X footprint, you may end up with a Y footprint. I get that. Your site plan. Approval. Documents that an applicant's looking really should be reworked, if that's what the planning board wants going forward, because you should make it very clear. Because we could have been working on this, and I don't object to the board saying we want to see this. I think that's totally reasonable. We could have been working on it for last month, but. I'm just, you may want to look at that going forward, but. I have no objection to what the board is proposing in terms of doing it as part of the site plan approval.
I'll make a motion that we. Get the information for rock walls. Prior to. Can you have it before the November 11th meeting?
I don't know.
We'll try our best, you know, that's the best I can tell you.
It's a ready rock wall, right?
It is. My only question is whether or not they would supply information and getting it through geotech information. So.
Well, it's not done by then, we can always defer it to the next meeting.
Mechanical stabilization is based on what you have for current soil conditions.
Correct, and so we normally would go out and do a geotech for the tower. Anyway, because we had to design foundations, goes with ground, based on that, so we do the geotech for that and also for the ready rock wall. So that's to get a trust. So that's, and obviously, that needs to schedule availability, weather, so on and so.
One thing that may help this whole process is. We, you know, engineer and calculate the needed disturb area for the mechanical stability of those side.
Yep.
That, that recalculate your area of disturbance, so it's more defined. Yep, because right now, it's not defined because you don't know the area disturbance for the. Mechanical stabilization that you have down the field.
That's what I was going to ask. We have our engineer. Look at. That question, kind of take a worst case scenario. Based on soil condition and just relook at the potential area disturbance. With the conditional expected condition of full, that. A full engineering soil and so forth, because it seems to me your concern is we might be disturbing a lot more than what we say we are. I prefer to just address it that way, rather than come back with a fully engineered wall. That's, that would hit me.
That makes sense to me, in this case.
Yeah, just, I mean, we could still make it a conditional, a condition of approval.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll come back, we'll submit that.
We could. You should get more information on the amount of disturbance.
And we'll get that, you still find that that's not enough, then we could talk about it. I'd be fine with just that disturbance.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Plus, on top of that. So in the next meeting, we still have enough time with clock. To, if we approve it, to give, to go and, it's paperwork, definitely, probably a meeting.
See what Ray thinks about that. I think we're fine.
So, Joe, could I? Joe, could I speak? This is Peter. I think you're at the point of making a motion to find the application to be complete. With two conditions, the applicant will provide more information regarding 24D. That was engineering calculations and 31, which is illustration of walls. 24D and 31, so the, somebody could move the application to be complete with two conditions. Sorry. 24D and 31.
31. I still have a couple of questions. I don't know if they're relevant to the application being complete or not. And reviewing the information, I did not see. Anything. About. The fall zone for the tower, before when we have had. Applications submitted for cell towers that were the fall zone. That was given the radius of. Where it would be. I didn't see that on any plans. Is this, if that type of information should be requested, Peter?
It, may I be heard on that? If I. The fall zone waiver, in my opinion, should not be addressed at the acceptance hearing. That's gonna be more on the merits. It's not an issue of whether the application is complete.
I agree with that, Paul. They did address in their project narrative on page one, the fall zone issue. And I agree with Attorney Springer that that's not really a completeness issue, but it is an issue which the planning board is going to address. When you sort of get to the merits.
Well, then, so then, the applicant is willing to wait until we get to the merits to answer that question and give us more information.
But I can point out on C3, you call out setbacks to surrounding structure. With the fall zone based upon, fall zone basically.
Well, yeah, no, but it doesn't show, it doesn't show, in other words. If, if the, will the fall zone affect the boom offering? It doesn't show that side of it at all. So I'm not seeing the radius of.
A fall zone is distance to surrounding buildings. That's how you define your fault, so, but if you're asking. If the tower is 120 feet, it's 125% to that, or it's within that. If you'd like us to add a circle to the rock showing the 125. You can, you'd be happy to.
All I want.
But from a fall zone in terms of an impact, actual fall zone, the tower is 120, so my question would be, do you want a. Circle that's 120 plus 1, at 125%? Or do you want to say, if that thing falls over like a tree, can you show me what it's gonna hit?
If you're asking me if it falls over like a tree, I just want to know what it does.
Okay, so you would like to see a 120-foot circle around that. Fair enough, you can do that.
I guess the rest is.
I have one other question. On the permits. Were they required to give us copies of the federal permits for? Falls under the FCC guidelines.
We have a full NEPA has been completed, we'll provide full copies for it. And that's National Environmental Protection, so that is a compliance report that addresses all the federal concerns of. Wetlands, tribal lands. Historic structures, so on and so.
Oh, did you bring that report that I?
I did not have time to get copies made, but we'll be happy to make full sets and have. Electronics, it's a pretty lengthy document. How many would you like?
One for each of the notebooks I hear.
How many copies of that do you want?
I can't remember how many notebooks we got here.
We'll coordinate with you.
I sent in, I sent in 15 notebooks, I think, you know. 15 NEPA reports are gonna be to the ceiling.
15?
I'll send them if you want.
Yeah, just send them because I have.
Okay.
And Ray Corber's, when he stops by, I'm gonna give him his notebook. You know, he comes here for other things, and all the members have a notebook. The public works director, you know, the fire chief. Yeah, Butch. So, yeah, so if 15 is what I told you, then 15 would be the right amount.
Because I believe it's also online, too.
So. Which is crazy.
Can't see it from here, I can't, okay.
Okay. If I can just interject to Attorney Springer's point. If anybody's seen a NEPA report. 15 reports, guys. That's gonna be piled up to the ceiling. I'm just saying. 15 NEPA reports. I'm just saying. I can't, I mean, anyway.
Can I make a suggestion?
Can you get them electronically? Seriously.
I sent one, I sent an e-copy to Carol earlier. Right, can I, can I send five copies of the NEPA, and if you run out by hand and mouth, I'll send another five? But it really, I mean, it's, it's, it's a huge amount of paper.
Butch Burbank's not gonna read one of those NEPA reports. I'll tell you that right now.
Thank you for being on.
And this is Ray Corber. We would prefer a digital copy, so we don't, we don't need a hard copy ourselves.
Okay.
I'd like to highly recommend this latter comment. Does not make sense to send tons of paper around anymore. In my opinion.
Hey, Paul? So it appears as though we are closing in on. Approving this application as complete, but I have one question for Ray. This application, obviously, is based on the plans that have been submitted. And you said you haven't reviewed them. So, Peter, how do we approve an application with an engineer that has not reviewed? The plans, to make sure that he might not need any more information. I'm not trying to stipulate the plan, but I want to make sure that, that Ray has had a chance to review this. I'm sorry that he hasn't had a chance prior to this. But before we approve an application. If Ray needs more information now, will be the time to be asked. Is that correct?
Finding it to be complete doesn't necessarily mean that you're stuck with this information for the rest of the duration of your review. In fact, we've already said that Ray's going to take a look at. 24D, the engineering, and 31 regarding the walls, so they've already agreed. Provide more information in those two areas, or at least the walls and the engineering if necessary. So you're just finding that they've submitted enough information to meet the. Criteria of your site plan review regulations. If during the course of your public hearings, you. Require something in addition to what you have now, you can certainly ask for it, and they'll have to provide it.
All right. Ray, are you okay with that?
Yes, that's, that's a normal part of the process, so. You know, we'll, we'll coordinate, collaborate with their consulting engineer, and if there's additional technical information that we need, we request it, invariably, we get it. So it's really, it hasn't been an issue. I don't expect it to be an issue.
Any other questions?
Yeah, as the, in the same, in the same respect. Any, all town officials, Carol, Ron, Nate, whoever, Butch. Have all town, town departments also had a chance to review this? For comment, or do they need to?
If they haven't, they can have it done by next meeting.
Between now, this is just the application, so what's it, this hasn't been considered by them.
I'm just trying to get anything that anybody wants out now, it's probably better for them. As to keep moving this process along and along and make it longer, so. Any information that we can obviously convey to them that we need now, it's probably better for that.
Yeah, well, we do, we do have some things that we'll address if it's in my, the things of my roadmap that I sent you. Anyway, so we'll address that after you. Make a determination whether this application is complete to accept.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we. Approve this application as.
We could open to public discussion. Any, any public discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, is that Peter, Peter Spanos?
Yes, Peter Spanos, yes. I'm not seeing myself on the camera, but that's all right. Where's Don? Is he here tonight? Donnie here tonight?
I don't think so, he is not.
Well, it seems like if you're gonna do something that's gonna have such irreparable harm to my business, my family. So many other things, you should at least show up for the meeting, but. I guess that's beside the point. There are other options, there's other alternatives. The Whale's Tale has a site that they could use. AT&amp;T and Verizon could get along, and Verizon could rent AT&amp;T some of their. Cell tower space, which I guess that's the real problem. AT&amp;T has terrible service up here. We understand that. It's true, it does have bad service. But you don't need to put an eyesore like that right at the entrance to Frank Conianosh. That is just crazy. Doesn't have to happen. Anyway, I've waited an hour and 15 minutes to say that. What do you think?
Well, then, get that, Carol?
Go ahead. Oh, yeah, one other thing, the balloon. I've dealt with this for 30 years. We've had. Companies after us to rent them cell service space, and I've always turned them down, but they always said they'd put a balloon up. Before it got to this point, so everyone could see what does 120-foot cell tower, you know, look like? What's the horizon gonna be? And I don't know why.
We already have that put on.
Sorry, I couldn't.
A balloon test was scheduled.
Couldn't make yelp, Joe.
The balloon test has been put in the agenda to be discussed. We have plans for such a test already.
Okay, that's all.
Public will be notified.
Anyway, I just think it's a real bad idea. Go ahead, Peter, what?
Go ahead.
Joe, Joe, can I speak? Joe, you're a little premature, I think, on opening it up. I think you're a little premature on opening it up to public comment. Whether or not the application is complete is really a decision for the. Board to make, and then once you find it to be complete, that. You know, we have a few other things to do, housekeeping matters, regional impact, and balloon test. And then we'll have a public hearing at which time Mr. Spanos and everybody else on this Zoom call. Will be invited to weigh in on whether or not the application should actually be approved, but the completeness decision is really just for the board.
You're correct. First motion opposed is public discussion, Phil.
So now you have a motion to accept the application as complete, with the exceptions of 31. And 24D.
We've got 29 performance bond. 29 performance bond, are we making that a decision of approval or?
We, no, we just, we were gonna make that at the end once we finish. But for the purposes of the accepting it as complete. I'm going to accept it as complete with the exceptions of 24D and 31. And that the applicant will leave to address those.
Anybody else on board have any?
Next motion. Go on, get a second, and we can discuss.
Can you interest a second?
So tonight, we just.
Go ahead. We will disapprove it so you can bring it to.
Yeah, it doesn't mean there's gonna be a solo.
No, no, no. This is me, so it brings to, we heard it.
This just means that they have a complete application.
Now, they have a clock ticking, a few days ago to get ready. All right, favor? Nate?
Just wanted to ask, Paul, Mark?
I didn't hear Mark, everyone.
Mark, we just took a vote, did you hear?
I did, I did hear, and I don't have any comment.
You got a vote? Do you want to vote?
I'll vote for the approval subject to the restrictions that Paul mentioned.
Yes.
Thank you.
But we want to discuss the rest of Carol's list.
Okay, so the question is whether this is a development, a potential regional impact. In the past, when we had the cell tower. The planning board has to make that determination. But in the past, we have made, have made that determination, so, for the purposes of notification, I did, I did notify the towns that were within the twenty foot radius of the exterior boundary of our town. We case to have a cartographic association, like, depending on.
Carol, make a motion that we consider this application a potential regional impact.
Development.
Development of regional impact.
I'll give the notice, I'll second you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm suing Mark, I'm still, I'll see him on that. You can't, Mark, all in favor, yes?
Favor.
We're the four. Everybody voting, voted, are you affirmative?
Um, should we ask the applicant about when they might wanna do this balloon test?
Okay, so, Ivan, Ivan had recommended, Ivan, you can speak up after this, but he had suggested that the balloon test, that there be two balloons, one at the hundred foot elevation, and the second one at the, is it one twenty-five?
One twenty.
One twenty.
They're recalling, so we know. Yes.
And then, I have an idea. And in addition, North Country Council wanted to know about what the lighting at the top of the pole, would there be a test that might?
There's no, there's no light proposed on top of that.
Okay, so even, even all the jet planes all use the corridor here for military training.
Correct.
Hundred and twenty feet, there's no requirement that there's gonna be a light on the top of that?
That's correct.
You'll find, you're on fly pretty low today.
They're flying a lot higher than a hundred and twenty feet, I'll tell you that.
Well, yeah, they are.
Your hair would have been on fire.
Typically, to this point, unless you're at next to an airport. So, we wouldn't think we would want.
Anyway, so, what we do is schedule a task, and probably talk about the appropriate appetizing.
That the applicant have the time that they wish to do this? Well, while permitting, to my breath. Typically, it's suggested, typically, we would scheduling time as to meet with the board and the public. Typically, it is maybe Saturday morning. Could be during the week, really up to you, when you, it's your schedule. We typically suggest it be early in the mornings, as typically when the winds are, that there's more of a true picture of what's going to be there.
Yeah.
That's true. And we would just normally pick any backup, you know, weather, weather data as well. I'd like to sit on a, on a weekend, two reasons, one is because that is the gateway for the Frankon Yonosh and the water stuff through here. And probably wouldn't hurt, but if you have it during that time, so if anyone wants to make any comments, that comes up there, we can use that. I'd also suggest that you might consider a couple of weeks out, just because a week cover fully down, that's the worst case scenario. It's always the. I would agree. Always. So, can, can you pick a couple of days, and you would like to do that, or do you want us to do that? I don't know if you need to do it because it's a public meeting, come planned out for if you're all out there, or how you wanna do that.
Well, we should get input, but, Joe just had to step out. Maybe we should get input from the public about it, because, you know, one of the concerns is that it's in the view shed of the Appalachian Trail Corridor. And, so the.
Could we ask Cheryl, because she's on with White Monet traction, and we could ask Peter?
And we could ask the North Country Council.
We could ask the North Country Council what they think, but whose time would be best?
Yeah.
Everybody called them? Anyone wanna comment?
Uh, hey, this is Cheryl. Um, what exactly are you, what are you looking for right now? Time of?
Time to do a balloon test.
Day and time.
Day and time, whether it's a weekend, so, everybody can see when people come up there, whether it's midweek. What's your thoughts?
Is there, is there a required time that it can, it can run, like, can it run a seven day or ten day period, or? No?
No.
No, you're flying for three or four hours, I mean, that's, that's.
Boy, um.
You do it in the morning, when the winds are less.
Last, last Saturday, last Saturday at eleven o'clock?
When most people fly.
I mean, I would certainly say the, what's gonna be the most reasonable would be on a Saturday, probably midday. You figure a lot of the traffic this time of year are day trippers coming from, you know, Massachusetts and point south. So you give them two or three hours to get north. So, midday, maybe eleven to, eleven to two on a Saturday?
I think they'll have poor weather conditions, they'll typically, they'll slow to dawn between saying ten and eleven. Yeah, if I could comment, Cheryl, do you have the ability to, to do pictures or video, or? I'm gonna say names, if there's a lot of, often go from three drones and stuff together, some sort of a view of it, so if there are people in this, if they look at it?
Yeah, I have a young man, we would have to, you know, I probably, yeah, I have a young man that does a lot of drone footage for us. We'd probably need at least a week out so that I can make sure he was available. But he could certainly help us out with some drone footage.
Heard on this, cuz I, I think there's sort of something of a misunderstanding here about the balloon test and what we do during a balloon test, and who should be watching or participating, quote unquote, in the balloon test. We're gonna fly the two balloons. With all due respect, the, the goal of the balloon test date and time should be to pick a date and time where the balloons are gonna go straight up. Not necessarily when most people are gonna be driving by in the road. Because once those balloons are straight up, what we do is we send out a crew to drive around and take pictures of the balloons. We will then super, then we'll prepare a report and produce it and give it to the board. That will have a picture before, a before picture of the balloons, and then an after picture with the balloons taken out and a picture of a hundred and twenty foot monopole imposed where the balloons were. So then, everybody on this call, and we provide that to the board. And so everybody's gonna be able to have that before and after. In addition, if we're gonna schedule it a week or two out, or whenever it is, anybody on the call can go take their own pictures and bring them to the hearing. You can do that. But the goal really is to get a date where we think hopefully the weather will be good. We always try to do it in the morning because the winds are less. The last thing you wanna do is schedule a balloon test where the balloon is gonna be because that benefits no. And, you know, Ms. Riordan can certainly get her crew out there with the drone, anybody on this call can take pictures. If there are particular view sheds you want us to cover, you can tell us, okay, go to the, and I'm just picking, you know, names, but, you know, go to school and take a picture from there, go to the downtown, take a picture from there. We can do that if you give us the address, keep in mind, we can't go on private property. But I really think the goal here is, let's get a date that the board is comfortable with. And then, the way to publicize it is, we're gonna post the notice. Anybody who's interested can go take pictures to their heart's content. But you will have a report with before and after, after pictures prior to the next meeting. Now, having said all that, if you still want, and I say this with all due respect, having said that, if you still wanna fly the balloon in the afternoon when people are driving up from Massachusetts, you can do that. Honestly, I think people are just gonna drive by and ignore it. I think the goal should be to get the board comfortable with the date and time, rather than trying to accommodate people who are coming up for a weekend. Now I'll shut up.
Can I make a suggestion? Peter, how about Sunday, November first, from ten to one, with a back update of Saturday, November seventh?
Can we do Saturday, October thirty-first, instead of Sunday, November first?
You could, it's Halloween, I don't know if that matters or not.
Kids don't trick or treat at eight AM, so.
We'll fly an orange balloon.
Orange balloon, perfect.
We'll make it look like a pumpkin. You know, if we're doing it in the morning, Halloween's probably not an issue.
Right.
Okay, you said that it's not allowed from private property, but I think what you meant to say was it's not allowed without the consent of the property owner for private land. Now, are you considering, are you considering the Appalachian Trail scenic view shed? Or, do you consider that private property, or any of the mountain corridors, you know, all those mountain tops that are gonna look down on this cell tower?
We will not be able to take photos from the top of the mountain.
Okay.
I, I would not, I.
Sorry, John.
I, I would not consider that private property. However, having done this a long time, when you're looking down, it will be backdroped by trees. It will not have nearly the visible, a one hundred and twenty, with all due respect, a pole of a hundred and twenty-five feet is not nearly gonna have the visibility, you might think, from a mountaintop a mile away. It's just not, it's not, people always. This, we deal with this issue all the time. If you were putting on the top of the mountain, you have, you're not, you don't have the backdrop, and so it's highly visible. Down below, when you're looking down, it's not gonna break the ridge line at a hundred and twenty feet. I don't care where you're standing on the Appalachian Trail, it's not, it's gonna be backdroped. So, even if you are on a bald peak, and I do a lot of hiking, I was, I was just doing East Osceola and Mount, Osceola a few weekends ago, I hike a lot. When you're on a trail, below the tree line, you will not see this, period, guaranteed. When you're above the tree line, you probably still won't see it because there's still trees above the tree line. But if you get on a bald peak and you're looking down, it will be backdroped by trees. And the visibility is minimal. I'm sort of, I'm getting ahead of myself right now, but, you know, to say, I, I can see where this is going, to say, you guys gotta send somebody up on the Appalachian Trail and take pictures, with all due respect. I vehemently oppose that, because you're just not gonna see this.
Can we nail down the date and time?
Well, look, yeah, I mean, if we, if we have enough time, a lot, I mean, you're looking at, what, what were the dates?
So, are we gonna say October thirty-first? October thirty-first from ten to one, is that date number one with a backup, back update of November seventh from ten to one?
I thought it was eight AM.
That's fine, that, that's fine with us.
October thirty-first?
Correct, and I thought it was eight AM to ten AM. I thought early morning was better.
Why couldn't it be five to one?
In November what?
Is that one of the time, yeah?
The following Saturday, November seventh, the following Saturday, November seventh. You can make it for whatever time you want.
Just a meditation, let it finish. One of the time.
I just wanted to clarify the times again.
That's what we're doing.
You can make it whatever times you want, I just threw out ten to one, but you can go earlier if you want.
I think we should listen to them about going earlier, because I think.
Weak condition, like you said.
Yeah, I mean, weak condition to the box. It's constant, it don't matter the time of day, this is pretty true.
How long do you go, one? If you want people in the public to be able to go out and take pictures from their vantage point. Say, for instance, Peter Spanos. If Peter Spanos wants to take pictures from different parts of the Indian Head Resort, if it was up there from eight to one, you would have an opportunity to go to the different parts of his resort and take pictures. Even though they're not gonna take pictures, but it would give people in the public enough time to take pictures from the places that they care about. I'm just saying, I know that you said that.
I would agree with that. Sorry.
So, let's go from eight to one.
Eight AM to one PM?
On both days, eight AM to one PM.
And that was Saturday, October thirty-first, with a backup rain date and Saturday, November seventh, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Both from eight to one.
Now, if you wanna identify any particular views that you want the applicant to provide you with photos of, this is probably a good time to do that. Any particular views from the linked surrounding area?
Obviously, I would go up and down ninety-three, we'll be going up and down three, so that those will be covered.
The Flume Basin, Lafayette, Boise Rock, the landmarks.
When I saw, when I saw.
And Bernie Hills, like.
When I saw the butters list, it appeared that there may be only four of butters, five of butters that were on that butters list. There was Peter, there was Woodwards, there was.
Parkers.
Parkers, there was.
Well, they're on the list, they're on your notice.
But what I'm saying is, if, if we could, between now and then, if we could ask them if they would mind if these guys took pictures, would that make sense to ask them prior? So at least we wouldn't have pictures from what the butters.
From their parking lot.
From where the butters are, at least the direct butters are, and that way they're.
I think Woodwards is just a sign plot, correct?
Woodwards is not a.
Yes, they are, yes, they are, they have a sign plot, like, of that property.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
And the other thing I would like to ask is, either Cheryl or the North Country Council, if they have any other recommendations that they would like to say?
Hi, this is Kayla Tavares, I'll speak, I'll begin speaking for North Country Council, and then if any of the other board members here wanna add in, they're welcome to. I think, I think hitting on the landmark seems to be an important piece. The road corridors that were described sound appropriate to me. So I think the list you guys are putting together, including, you know, those, those attractions and landmark points, sound like the right ones to me. So I think you are on the right road. I think, I don't have any particular ones I think to add, but I would defer to Carl if he has another opinion on that.
Yeah, this is Carl Martland, I'm the chair of the North Country City Byway Council, and a member of the Board of North Country Council. I agree with what's been said, I would especially like to have videos as you come off that off-ramp headed toward the notch. Because you're coming around a corner there, and you suddenly, you're, you're seeing a bit of the ridge, and then suddenly, the whole ridge is there in front of you, it's one of the most magnificent views in the notch. And as, when I went to look at the location, it seemed to me that that tower would be sticking up right smack in the middle of that view. So I think a video as for a driver coming around that corner, in addition to the still photos, would be good. And I think a view from the tower at Indian Head Resort, if they would allow that, that that's an important landmark for tourists, and that that would be a good place. On the trails, I think that, that, the comments that were made are true, you wouldn't see much. But to get a picture from up there, or from above, with a simulated tower, I think would be a relevant thing to have.
And the view south from the flume.
Also, the view coming south, going, heading south from the flume. You go down that road, and you go onto that beautiful bridge, and right as you're turning, suddenly, that tower, I'm not sure where it would be on the lot, but it might be right exactly in front of a view of a low hill and then a distant ridge. And I think it could be sticking up right in the middle of the motorist's view, which would be, you know, going into the notch, coming out of the notch, coming off the off-ramp, there are sort of important places where you don't want something disrupting the view. Thank you.
John, did you, John Sperry, did you get all that, those locations?
I have up and down ninety-three, up and down Route three, coming off the off-ramp as you head to the notch.
You have the basin? Lafayette?
Can't see.
You must be up that far. You must be up that far. Yes, you do.
Cheryl, do you have any other locations for ninety-three?
Well, is there any way that, that people could email me the list, and then I could forward it to them?
It's okay, if you want, you got your list over the next week, if the president review it.
That is.
Alright. Oh, Jim.
So, did you hear that? So my email is. So my email is planning, P L A N N I N G. At Lincoln NH dot org. So if you, if you send me. Places that you're concerned about, I can make a list and I can share it with them.
Okay.
Just a minute, open up the public discussion.
I'll make a motion over in full, second.
Second.
Okay.
Is it that they will not or cannot take pictures from private property, or can they do that with permission? And if they can do it with permission, I, I, I like the suggestion of the Indian Head Tower, I think that's a important landmark. I mean, granted it's private property, but that's open to the public for viewing. I think that'd be an important place to do it, and I would offer up the top of any one of our tall towers at the whale's tail. The highest one, the furthest one north, whichever one is most appropriate, but, and I'll be there to let someone in and bring them up to the top of the tower.
How about the Flume, the Flume, the medieval site?
I don't believe so. I can watch a bit alone.
Yeah, it's down in.
Move three, you probably could, in front of the Flume.
Uh, we would need written permission. The landowners right on.
Even if you go in there with the landowner, if I, or the Hannah wants to be there.
I'll ask, but usually pretty, pretty set.
They'll give you a written permission.
I mean, it could be an email.
Saying, rate, check permission from those landowners. Gotcha.
All right, and I know Peter's online, he's.
Yeah, I wanna ask Peter, Peter Spanos, did you, his, his voice cut off? Oh, okay, Peter, do, have you heard everything that's discussed about taking pictures and?
Yes, yeah, I'm all for it, I think that. Someone should take as many pictures as they, as they can from Indian Head or the tower or wherever they want.
We should be calling to give them written permission to be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm gonna write to, to Cheryl and send it to her now.
Yes.
Does written permission have to go to you or down? We need to have permission for our contractor to go on the property, so does permission, do you wanna state? Give an address, like, so people can send permission, if you, if you. You send to Carol, to Carol, the disreferred GMR Holdings.
She can see.
She can forward it to the. Let me tell everyone that's in that baseline, Peter, do you understand that?
Yes, yep.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm gonna send it to Cheryl and she's gonna forward it to you, right?
No.
Copy to you.
Carol, GMR Holdings, two Riverwood Drive?
Seven oh two Riverwood Drive.
Okay, and it's Carol.
Nope, you're gonna send, yes, you're sending Carol.
You're gonna send it to me.
Send it to the town planner, so. Just reference GMR Holdings in New Hampshire as applicant, as permission.
Yeah, you can drop it off at the town office too, either way.
Okay.
Any other, any other public discussion? Motion to close public discussion, so move, second, approved.
Okay, so the next. Piece of paper there, we need to determine. We need an escrow for the telecommunications expert Ivan Hagacheck, who's gonna review. The reports from the telecommunications perspective. So Ivan, can I, should I just forward the one you sent me months ago when we knew this was coming, or? Are you there, Ivan?
Yeah, just had to unmute, yes, just forward the proposal I sent you a few months ago.
Okay, so.
Message, do you want the board to vote on that? So they have an escrow? I'll make a motion that we set up an escrow for the telecommunications expert Ivan.
I'll second.
I'll favor it.
Okay, and the same for the engineer, the town engineer?
I'll make a motion to set an escrow for our town engineer, Ray Corver.
I'll second.
I'll favor it.
And then the third one is the escrow to reimburse the town for legal expenses related just to processing the application. So moved.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to set up an escrow for Peter Muddy.
Legal expenses.
Legal expenses.
I'll second.
I'll favor it.
Okay, so then the last thing I think we need to do is set up a date for continuing hearing.
I thought the next. Day was November.
Eleven eleven, okay, Veterans Day.
We've already, we've already got one scheduled, right, eleven eleven, I've got something wrong, you said something.
I have, I have Miles Moran and Thomas Truman coming in for a boundary landing.
Will be a good time to start, I, I don't envision this going, being done on a meeting view.
I, I don't know.
Do you want both on that meeting or not? On the eleven?
I don't think that that's gonna take very long, I don't think that the Miles Moran and Thomas Truman thing will take very long.
So are you comfortable with the schedule on this?
Put them for us, get them out of the way.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
That leaves them enough time to get what you asked. What date is that?
Eleven eleven.
Does that leave you enough time, do you think?
Should be.
That's four weeks. The other.
The, if the balloon float is moved to November seventh, it'd be difficult to turn around.
Oh, right.
Yeah, possibly.
Okay, so the other, the other options is I, usually we try to schedule things on the second and fourth Wednesdays, but. The fourth Wednesday is the day before Thanksgiving, which there are several of us that actually cook because, so we're not doing that. The only option is.
Cooking us turkey?
Pardon?
Yeah, cooking us a turkey.
Why don't we stick with the eleventh, and if the balloon test is postponed to the seventh, then we can reschedule that meeting?
I agree, I would like that.
We can cover other things.
Yeah.
Well, our clock, what time, we, we have a time, a clock on this, right?
Right.
Thirty days.
Well, I think it's thirty-four hours.
On that, it'll affect the posting in the paper.
By mutual consent, we can.
We'll go for the eleven fifty-five.
And if for some reason the balloon test does get postponed to be.
I'll beg and plead and see if I can get it done.
Carol? Also, we have, this, this have you posted in the paper? Somebody did before, because love is actually an ad hoc planning board meeting. I mean, a balloon test.
Well, the balloon test.
We have to notify the paper and ask.
Okay, so the balloon test is gonna have to go in the paper. You have, you have a notice already that you could just forward to me because. The paper that we use is only a weekly paper. And that is, so the deadline for notices to the newspaper are eleven o'clock on Fridays. So today's Wednesday, I know that John Springer had sent me notice to the newspaper, you know, back. When we had the conceptual, is it possible to just forward the newspaper add to me for, Friday was Friday? Because it was not pulled in the papers until Wednesday, the twenty-first. For the balloon test on the following week on Saturday.
Could you also put a speculation there that if the weather, wind and weather conditions aren't perfect, it can't be done, you transfer it to another date, all the same.
I would put both dates in there, the regular date and the rain date.
Yep.
And then maybe what we should do is, we should probably put the add in twice. I'm just recommending it on the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth, so that. So that people will have some notice. And do we do a notice to a butters for that, or can I just? Do I have to do notice to a butters for the balloon test? I'm asking Peter.
Did you hear that, Peter?
I think it would be a good idea, I don't know if it's required, do you usually do that, John?
Uh, yeah, sometimes yes, sometimes no, honestly, we don't always do it. It, I have no objection to sending the notice to the butters, I, my guess is.
I have a good, I have a good set of labels, because I save that set of labels, so it wouldn't be too hard, you could email the labels.
Right, the, the only thing I would ask is that, I mean. You keep, I'm sending you a check, Carol, by the way, today, it went out, or tomorrow for fourteen hundred dollars.
We saw that.
The notice for this hearing, I, I don't want notice above case for the balloon test. I, I don't think that's fair.
You didn't want notice what?
You can do that if you want voluntarily, but I don't, it's not required and I, I don't think it's fair to the applicant. You wanna do the direct to butters, I'm happy to do that.
No, not to and just to back direct to butters.
Nothing.
What, I'm sorry?
I mean, we just, we would just send it regular mail. It's not, we'd be sent certified mail, return receipt or anything.
It's a thing, it's a thing as too, if the butters come to the hearing. We're gonna have, like they do come tonight, they would have been notified about the hearing, they would listen to it, nobody could show it up to discuss it. And they haven't, the butters haven't notified about this already, but you're on somewhere working, somewhere not. Been out of town, somebody who knows one, so you gotta err on the side.
I think you could do the direct to butters, the North Country Council and other organizations that are involved and. And municipalities who can, you know, reasonably be expected to see the tower. You had some municipalities on your twelve K list like Jackson and Conway and Osiphe and Bartlett that. I don't think we need to provide notice of the balloon test to those towns.
Actually, I don't know if I agree, the only reason I don't agree with you, Peter, is because then why do we notify? That we were putting cell towers, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a, an impact of regional, if it's a regional impact. Granted, they could have been here tonight, maybe some chose not to, but shouldn't we at least give them it just notification, whether they come or not. At least we are on the side of saying we notified you of, of the balloon test.
Well, you actually, you actually noted, we over notified towns, because it's not twenty miles from town boundary to town boundary, it's twenty miles from the. Monopole, I, I believe, or the.
Whatever the regulations are.
Tech, technically, it's not even that, Peter, it's communities within twenty miles that will have a view of the tower. Which is about zero communities, if we're gonna be honest, a hundred and twenty foot pole and that, in, in between those hills, between the ridge lines.
Woodstock, the only one.
You know, you wanna do the communities whose, you know, boundaries but yours, okay. But.
Well, whatever the law, I mean, whatever the law is, I mean.
Woodstock and Frankonia are the only two I'd really push on. Even Woodstock, Frankonia coming out, we seen it, Woodstock, come right to Woodstock, get to Lincoln.
Right. I'm just saying, whatever the law reads, but we gave everyone else all this information and now, but I don't know why we did it in the first place.
Again, that's how they recommended on the first.
We got it by the second, two thousand fourteen, when we did the last one.
Well, what is the law, what does the law say? Do we know what the law says?
The law just recommends.
The law doesn't say, the law doesn't say anything about balloon test notice. For this formal hearing, the law says twenty miles, will, all communities within twen- twenty miles that will have a view of the tower, that's what the law says. We noticed, for this hearing, I'm not being critical, I'm just saying, I, I had this discussion before with Carol and Peter. We noticed way, way, way more communities that are entitled to notice under the law. Like I said, fourteen hundred dollars of certified mail at five dollars a pop, do the math.
So how about we, in addition to the newspaper notices, we notice. The direct to butters as well as the municipalities surrounding Lincoln, direct to butting and surrounding Lincoln.
I'm fine with that.
Well, there's a lot of.
Lincoln's pretty big, you know.
Lincoln's pretty big, that's a lot of municipalities, I think.
If, if, I, I agree.
Woodstock, Frankonia and the direct to butters, I think would be sufficient.
That's fine too, if you're sending out first class mail, you know, you can choose whichever option you just said, I'm fine with that. I just don't wanna use the twelve K list.
I'm making a motion, we notify Woodstock, Frankonia and the direct to butters.
I'm fine with me.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Carol, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, Carol, I'm gonna, you want me to send you the balloon test notice by Friday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I will do that.
Early Friday morning, because I gotta forward it to the.
You'll get it tomorrow, you will get it tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Joe, can I say something as town manager?
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna remind the board. As your town manager, we're in the middle of a pandemic. The targets is a moving target, I just want all of our town boards to know that the way we meet. Almost day by day, but certainly week to week could change, so I want you to stay flexible because everything could be done by Zoom. We, it is possible that our town hall will be shut down again, so just so you know. I just want you all to be around, you know, we don't have to stop meeting, but it could be all Zoom.
We can put this, notifications that will be presumed required to.
Well, some of us don't have the ability, I, I do.
We'll make it all legal, it's just that, it's just that, it's just that we're, it's a changing environment hourly and daily, okay? That's all I wanna say.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Any other comments? Make it quick, I'll get a little bit of a shot.
I know, I just wanna make sure that the applicant. That the applicant has all the information that they really need going away from here tonight, so you have any questions?
I can't even hear you, now you go back around twenty miles.
I think we have all we need.
Fantastic.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You can need a motion to continue to November eleventh?
All right.
It, no, this, this is the application, why don't we, we're not continuing the hearing, this is. We're continuing?
Yes.
I'll motion.
It was noticed.
Motion to continue to November eleven.
Second.
At six o'clock.
At six PM, right here, well, for my zoom.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Is there any other business coming in? I've heard.
Yes.
Is our hearing just adjourned?
Yes.
We did.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sign off, I'll send you the notice, thank you for your help, everybody, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I will stop recording.
Meeting's adjourned, everybody's gone.
Okay, will you be here for Miles and Tom, or do you want me to do that as well?
Did you guys adjourn?
We did.
Yes.